This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, Hasslet. Good evening, Council. I call this meeting to order at 7:03 PM, February the 7th, 2022, the Hasslet City Council Meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody here, and it looks like everybody has survived our ice storm. Very good. Anyway, if you would bow your heads with me, we'll have the invocation, then stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Father, for all the many blessings and your protection and over us in these last few days with our ice event. And as it turned out, there was no events. We thank you for the many blessings that you give us and the guidance that you give us daily. Jesus' name, amen. If you'd stand with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three is something very special that that we have coming is Hasslet Public Library. I'd like to introduce Barbara Thompson, our library director. And we are receiving a copy of the Tarrant County 2020 Coronavirus Pandemic Historical Book. And it's, I would like to introduce Tarrant County Clerk Mary Louise Nicholson.
Okay. So I appreciate y'all coming out, and I just want to give a brief history behind the book and how it happened, and why we believe it's so important to share in Tarrant County. I think we all agree 2020 was nothing any of us ever experienced in the world. The pandemic changed everything, how we lived, how we worked, private sector, public sector. And the background and purpose of this book is to memorialize the events of 2020 pandemic through an illustrative narrative, and as they occurred in Tarrant County government for generations to come. It was a six-month effort that we began in March of 2020. When I asked one of my team members, who's a photographer for Hobby, please start taking pictures, because we started seeing closures and signs in downtown Fort Worth, the old courthouse where I work. Things were shuttered, and we'd never seen that. So I asked her to start documenting that. The project officially kicked off. We had gathered lots of information in 2020 when the Commissioner Court approved it, and the auditor said, yes, Mary Louise, you can create this record. So we hired a local writer and a local printer, tailor printing, and we created this 176-page book about the pandemic. We go to the next slide. Governor Abbott is gracious enough to be in the introductory message. Judge Glenn Whitley is in the prologue. We had the elected officials of Tarrant County and the Tarrant County Departments and Staff. As keeper of the record, part of my responsibility is to generate records and archive them, and this was certainly no exception. Our committee in this book included the 1918 pandemic, how 100 years later, I mean, we were on the same path. Back in 1918, the government in Fort Worth and different places all over that had the pandemic, were encouraged for chin sales, handkerchiefs. And there was a big hoopla of anti-chin sales out there in 1918. So we just, it's human nature, and it repeated itself. The book also contains a memorial page to share with future generations how many lives were lost in the 41 cities between March 10th and April 8, 2021, before we went to printing. There were 3,000 family members, neighbors, and friends when we didn't have the vaccine. These were people that were never going to survive. So wherever you're at on the vaccines, we did lose 3,000 people for something we had no idea what we were dealing with. And we have them in all the cities, the number listed. It's an honor to do this, and we wanted to put this book in the hands of people that would cherish it, and make it available for future generations. So we donated, or we produced a certain number of books that we are going to donate to the cities, the libraries, all the universities in Tarrant County, and all the high schools. Tarrant County Court, Commissioner Court also ran their own set of prints, and they have them available for the public if anybody wants to buy them. They're selling them for $20, and they're donating, I believe, to the United Way or the Tarrant Area Food Bank. So if you want one of those, you just have to reach out. One of the most important things for me is that we reached out to the different museums and people that wanted to keep this big historical place. And we reached out to the Library of Congress. And as clerk, I've been to the Library of Congress, records and historical things. And they told me years ago, they don't take books anymore. Everything is electronic. So we assumed they would take an electronic version, but the Library of Congress wrote back and said, we want two of your books. So I feel pretty confident in Tarrant County, nobody thought of this in Texas and in Tarrant County. We have given it to all the universities, and they're so thankful that we captured this information. So it is an honor to give it to Ms. Thompson as a reference book for your library, and we appreciate the opportunity. You're welcome. And we are going to do the photo, if you don't mind. Y'all have a wonderful rest of your year. And remember, at the clerk office, we're always around if you ever need it. Bird, Land Records, passports, criminal courts, misdemeanor courts, civil court, county commissioner court, we got you.
Thank you. Well, I will tell you, the only thing I want to do with the criminal court is to vote for a judge. Thank you so much. That was nice. That's very good. Barbara, do we get to look at it one day? Good deal. Thank you. Item four, citizen participation and comments. Do we have anybody that would like to, we have any requests?
I have received no request.
Anything, anybody online? All right then, let's move to item five. Items to community interest. We have several. 5A, this filing period for the May 7, 2022 general election is open. The last date of filing an application for a place is May 7, 2022. General election ballot is 5:00 PM, Friday, February the 18th, 2022. Councilmember Place 5, councilmember Place 3, and councilmember Place 5 will be on the ballot. And I would like to announce that Mayor Pro Tim Morrow, Occupied Mayor, Councilmember Place 5, has filed today. Very good. 5B, quarterly brush-off is Saturday, February the 12th. Mark your calendar. So 20th, February the 12th, 2022, will be from 8:00 PM till noon. Hasslet residents may drop off brush behind the Hasslet Fire Station. A Hasslet water bill and identification with matching address will need to be shown to gain access to the drop-off area. 5C, all city offices and library will be closed Monday, February 21st, 2022, in observance of Presidents' Day. And if we would go to item six, staff reports, fix A, community park projects. Mr. Anderson, will you be presenting that? Or is that Mr. Rogers?
Why don't we let, why don't we let David take that one, if he's, I think he's online?
David, are you online?
There he is.
We don't hear anything, David. Nothing yet. There's a technical failure there somewhere. Maybe your mic is separate from the system? We show that your mic is on, but we're not hearing anything.
Mr. Mayor, why don't we, I'll go ahead and take the community park items and the spoils pile, and that'll give David some time to sort out his microphone, if that's okay. So what we've got put together going to the Parks Board on Wednesday is a up-to-date concept plan from our discussions with them back at the tail end of last year, as well as cost estimates for all of the community park, the Gamma Park, as well as the tap trail lighting improvements. So we've broken those cost estimates down by projects, and we will walk the park board through those projects on Wednesday and solicit feedback from them, determine whether or not additional revisions are required or requested out of the concept plan. And then most probably be taking those to the EDC for consideration for funding. Put together a little funding plan for those, at which time all this will be brought back to the council for review and discussion. So that's coming up on Wednesday, park board meeting. Item 6C, just to bring everyone up to speed on what we're trying to accomplish there. We've been successful in reducing some of the pile out there, the spoils pile, from the road reconstruction project. We burned quite a bit of that with the fire station parking lot expansion, the interim facility there behind the fire station. And we've got our surveyor lined up to go out and get some measurements on the remaining piles so we can put together a grading plan in an attempt to use some of that material for the park access road, as well as the park parking area there behind the fire station. That's one of the inter-local agreement projects that's coming up this year between the city of Hasslet and Tarrant County. And so hopefully, we're able to use quite a bit of that material there. I don't know why we wouldn't be able to. It worked out great for us on the fire station parking lot. So that's the latest on that, unless David has something different. Looks like he may be back. See if his, if his mic works now.
Hopefully it works. I'm not sure.
Very good. We hear you loud and clear.
Yeah, no, Mike's right. That's what we've got going on with that project. It's hopefully using pretty much most of that from what we think. Well, we won't know until Mike gets through with his survey and to know for sure. But we believe we'll be using most of that on that project.
Will some of it be used, so this would be used for grading and preparation for chip seal for that drive down through the Boston baseball fields, correct?
Correct. It would be. It would be all the way from there with the concrete approach to the parking lot from the fire station, all the way down and through to the baseball fields.
Does that include Nance Field, any work over there?
Yes, it does. It includes the same exact thing done to Nance Field, where we may also need some material, maybe not quite as much, but we do think we'll probably have some over there also.
Very good. Very good. How about item 6B?
I guess the biggest thing, everything, most stuff we're just waiting on, waiting on our UTV, waiting on our mini excavator. But we did view a truck, or the back truck today, and could possibly have a lease agreement ready. Probably, most likely, the first meeting in March. I might have it sooner, but I'm not going to say I will, and then something happens, but we're hoping to.
So as I understand that you and others viewed this truck this afternoon?
Yes, we did, at 3 o'clock this afternoon. It is a very nice truck. Now it's all about, and the price is less than what we budgeted, which is good. And it's available, unlike everything else we've done, it is actually available today in Arlington. But we've got to figure out the lease agreements and stuff, make sure that all fits. And it is a truck that has other people in line looking at this truck. We are first on the list, but the city of Port Arthur, city, I believe, of Rockport and Hurst are also in the running to look at this truck also. But we got first look, so we got first dibs right now. So hopefully, we can come up with a decent lease agreement from these guys and move forward.
Well, very good. Good job. All right, we moved to item seven, the consent agenda. We have two items. 7A is approval of January 17, 2022, regular city council meeting minutes. 7B is ratification of the Hasslet Community and Economic Development Corporation Type B action adopting Hasslet Feed and Farm as an economic development project eligible for funding, which location is 100 Main Street. Council, would you like any item pulled? All right then. We could entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion is made to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. Roll call, vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts?
Aye.
Councilmember Nahira?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Rob?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Council. Item eight, public hearing ordinances, resolutions, and action items. 8A, let me make an announcement. Been requested we remove 8C from the agenda, so HC will not be heard tonight. Code 8A, discuss, consider, and act regarding approving an ordinance calling the May 7, 2022 general election and authorizing a joint election agreement with other Tarrant County political subdivisions and a contract for election services with Tarrant County Elections. Is there a motion? Or a discussion?
Mayor Halsey?
Yes.
I move to approve the ordinance calling the May 7, 2022 general election authorizing the joint election agreement with other Tarrant County political subdivisions.
Motion is made to approve the ordinance calling for the May 7, 2022 general election and authorizing joint election agreement with other Tarrant County political subdivisions as submitted. Is there a second?
Mayor Halsey, I second that.
It is seconded. Have a roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts?
Aye.
Councilmember Nahira?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Rob?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes. Let me interrupt right here. I see that our Tarrant County Sheriff, Debbie East, are here. Sergeant Lamonian, how are you doing? Anything you want to address to the council? Very good. 8B, 2022 election of suburban cities representative metropolitan area EMS Authority Board of Directors. So this is actually casting our ballot, and Chief Mays will do a presentation for us on this issue.
Being mayor council, this might be the easiest decision you have to make. But, so again, just a quick overview. So MedStar is our ambulance provider, and there's a board of directors that is made up of nine people. There's the city of Fort Worth, and then there's 14 other cities. That's what we call the suburban cities. And those 14 collectively get one board member, one seat on the board. And that's what's before you today. We, the incumbent is not running again. And so as we searched high and low, I reached out to a citizen that lives here in Hasslet, and unfortunately, he wasn't able to commit the time. So we did our due diligence. But we did come, Halton City Rep is offering Bryce Davis, their emergency management coordinator. Bryce also came from the city of Fort Worth in their emergency management department, and I had the privilege of working with him. He was responsible for doing the airshow and their planning and coordinating. And so it's strong work. He's ex-military, or he's still military. He's not even ex. So, you know, he's a pretty squared-away guy that sees the big picture, and I think would represent Hasslet well. We had a meeting with several of the area chiefs, and we did our Q and A with him. And he was our guy, and ended up being no other candidate. So anyway, I'll let you make your decision.
I'm sorry, I had my mic off. Council, this would be for casting our votes for Mr. Bryce Davis, and/or not casting a vote at all.
I make a motion to cast all votes for Bryce Davis as the Metropolitan Area EMS Authority Board of Director.
Motion is made to cast all votes for Mr. Bryce Davis as the suburban cities representative Metropolitan Area EMS Authority Board of Directors. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a second, and a roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts?
Aye.
Councilmember Nahira?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Rob?
Aye.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes 5-0. Item 8D, discuss, consider, and act regarding the approval of preliminary plat for Lot 1, Block 1, Milestone Church addition, which location is 11175 FM 156 South. Staff presentation. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What you have before you this evening is a preliminary plat for the Milestone Church. It is comprised of a single lot of record with approximately 10.479 acres within the platted boundaries. Mayor gave you the physical address of the property. It's generally located at the northwest intersection of Country Lane and 156 in Hasslet's ETJ. The applicant is proposing to construct a 17,000-square-foot building in Phase 1 of their project with a 32,000-square-foot Phase 2 building expansion at some point in the future. We've analyzed the preliminary plat for access. They're proposing two connections to Country Lane for their parking lot. See it, might be able to see it on that second exhibit there, Mr. Tucker. There we go. So they've got a total of three connections proposed ultimately to Country Lane. The first two that you see in gray there would coincide with Phase 1 construction. The applicant's proposing their main drive, main access point for the church to come off an existing drive located at the northeast corner of the property. So they are in the process of trying to secure that right from Tech Dot. And in the event that they're unable to do so, we may have to look at additional improvements to Country Lane. But I have a feeling that they should be able to get their access permit through Tech Dot with the city support. So just an item of note on that. Fire protection will be available to this facility via an existing 12-inch line that's adjacent to FM 156. They have coordinated a fire loop through Phase 1 in their parking area, hydrants and a fire line connection to the building so that adequate fire protection is provided for Phase 1, and then can be expanded in the future to cover the additional building. In exchange for a waiver on the fire line impact fee, the developer has agreed to deferred voluntary annexation of the project upon completion of the building in a manner similar to what we put together for the two projects off of Blue Mountain Road, the Gaddy RV Storage, and the Vista Ridge Commercial adjacent to that project. So we had some discussions this afternoon with the church and their team. They're going to be reaching out, if they haven't already done so, to the mayor to begin the discussions of that deferred annexation agreement. So that should be being worked on over the next month or so while these folks prepare their final plat and final construction plans. And we'll be going back and forth between them, city staff and the city attorney, to get the deal points and intricacies of that agreement worked out. Sewer service for the addition, there's an existing 8-inch sewer line that serves the North Glen subdivision to the north. I've recommended that the applicant install an onsite private list station to serve the interim and ultimate needs of the church. They had discussed the possibility of spray fields, and we suggested that they might reevaluate and connect to the city's sewer since proximity-wise, it is pretty close to their project. So working through the final deal points of that, but it's going to be our recommendation that they do tie to the city's sewer system for sewer service. And then you can kind of see on the site plan that's up on the screen before you. They have a detention pond located at the southeast corner of the project and the general location of an existing, appears to be a stock tank. And so that pond will account for their increased runoff through the development and provide for an offset for their additional runoff as a mitigating device. And so we've got, I don't think Morris had any other additional items that he would like for me to cover. We're prepared to make a recommendation that the preliminary plat be approved. It was approved at the PMZ meeting last week, two weeks ago. Let's see here, January 25th, they voted 4 to 0 to approve their preliminary plat. So that is our recommendation as well. And I'm available for any questions or discussions. I do believe there's some members of the applicant's team there in the audience with you. And I'm sure those gentlemen will welcome any opportunity they have to hopefully answer some of your questions as well.
I would like to make a note regarding to Mr. Anderson's presentation. He had mentioned a pre-annexation agreement. Pre-annexation agreement has no bearing on the consideration of this preliminary plat. Please understand that. That only comes into consideration with the final plat. So any comment towards a pre-annexation agreement with regard to a preliminary plat is, has no effect.
I've got a question about the annexation. So currently, this property is not part of city Hasslet proper, is that correct?
This property is in the ETJ. And our subdivision ordinances do extend into the ETJ of Hasslet. And it's been reviewed by engineering and planning and others to, in accordance with that.
The other question I have is about the
The other question I have is about the septic system. Is this only a temporary system and it's going to be eventually tied into the city sewer system?
Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir.
Terry Sewer, did they say that's septic or you, I heard you, uh, recommending tying to sanitary sewer Hasslet?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend that they tie to the city system. You know, the ordinance, um, states that, um, if sewer is available in, uh, a reasonable distance away, um, that it's a requirement, uh, for all lots to be served by sewer. Uh, it doesn't really give a footage. I know the ordinance does speak of a footage in proximity to water facilities. Um, so this, the, this line is about, uh, I don't know, 300, 300, 400 feet, um, north of the, the, where their lift station would be on the north side of the building there. You kind of see on this exhibit, there's a, that, that lot.
Anderson, what's your recommendation? Do they tie into, with regard to our ordinance or is, or do they have the leeway of doing a onsite septic?
Um, the applicant's proposed septic. We've had, um, two meetings over the last couple of weeks and, uh, last direction I gave them this afternoon was that they, uh, figure out a plan to tie to the city sewer system. That would be my recommendation.
Very good. Uh, invite the applicants. Would you like to address the council?
Council members, my name is Tom Jones. Excuse me. I'm the engineer for Milestone Church. Uh, we also have an architectural representative here tonight and a gentleman from the construction management firm. So, um, with regards to sanitary sewer, Mike and I have had several conversations, um, even up to this afternoon. Uh, the intent at this point in time is to, uh, use onsite septic field for phase one of the church, the 17,000 square foot, uh, phase one facility. Um, and then as the church expands into phase two and consumes the remainder of the property and parking, uh, that we would then connect to the city system. Um, Mike is correct, distance wise, it's about three to 400 feet north of us. However, it is at an elevation that is too high for us to gravity into that system. Uh, so the requirement for the church would be to have an onsite lift station, a force main and an easement that is not at this time available across the subdivision to our north to connect to that system. So we do have some logistical issues, uh, to make that connection. It is not a gravity connection, uh, but I have done initial analysis. The system is large enough to accommodate our use at such time that we do connect. So, um, the church's thinking is that with the property available on the western portion, we would want to maintain the option to do septic at this time and then tie in with a lift station and force main when phase two comes along. Now those numbers and that analysis is still going back and forth a little bit with the church from an economic standpoint, uh, assessing their future growth potential, uh, the initial cost of the septic field and then weighing the initial and ultimate cost of the lift station enforcement. So it's our desire at this time to keep those options open for the church if that is possible.
Very good, counsel. Do you have any questions?
I had one question. You answered mine on the sewer, so thank you. On the, um, entries, so there would be three off of Country Lane and then one off of 156. That'd be, that's ideal, but was he, was Mike saying that the 156 one has to be approved?
At this time, let me start over again. Uh, the existing driveway on 156 is in place at this time, but Mike did make a great point today that, uh, in place but not for this anticipated. So, uh, we had been assuming that that would be our primary entry point, uh, but Mike encouraged us to get with Tech Dot and secure a little more definitive approval of that location. Uh, and then ultimately we'll submit a Tech Dot permit application to that driveway through the city when the plans are approved.
Thank you. So even if that driveway gets approved, would you still have the three on Country Lane as well? Or do we not need all of those if the other one is approved? Or, uh, you might not have determined that yet, though.
Um, we're still, we're working on the master plan in front of you that ultimately does have three driveways off County Lane. Uh, from a strict traffic trend, uh, standpoint, two are sufficient if we have the one on 156.
Is your intent that, uh, I'm just looking at, like the north entry, is that like an in and the south once and out for managing traffic? Anything like that? I'm just curious.
So, uh, you're speaking about the north entry off of 156?
Yeah, the north and then the south, the south being Country Lane.
Uh, the north entry, obviously a 156 is going to be improved in the near future.
Sure.
Dedicated right away and we're trying to accommodate both the current condition and the ultimate condition. Um, ultimately that north driveway will have one lane in and two lane, or one lane in, one lane out. There won't, we do not anticipate a median opening at that location. Uh, Country Lane and the public street into the subdivision to our north are more primary traffic generators than our driveway.
Anderson.
So that's strictly going to be, uh, southbound in and then southbound out condition. Uh, so I would suspect that people using the church facility will make use of Country Lane in order to exit and go northbound. Uh, and whether that becomes a primary entry or exit point, uh, you know, that's going to be subject to the traffic and the condition of the road, uh, certainly as we go through this transition period, uh, between the unimproved 156 and the ultimate six lane thoroughfare.
Uh, Councilmember Clark or Councilmember Rob, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, this is Councilmember Rob. So I, since, uh, annexation or not annexation is not, uh, on the table tonight, can I assume then that the waiver of the fire line, uh, connection is also not, uh, uh, part of this at all? We're just talking about preliminary plat and the rest of those kinds of details, where they annex or don't annex and where they pay a impact fee or not is a subject for another time? Question mark?
That's correct. Subject for another time. There is no consideration for waiver of anything here.
Okay, good. Then I don't have any other questions.
And let me get clarity from, uh, Mr. Anderson. Give you a chance to turn on your mic. There you are. So, uh, the, the request of using, uh, for phase one onsite septic and then in phase two, kind of tying into the, uh, sanitary sewer, city's sanitary sewer, that's, uh, that's good with engineering.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't have an issue with that, Mr. Mayor. Um, that would obviously end up going through Tarrant County. Um, so we would, uh, make sure that those notes are on the plat and that they're, uh, that they coordinate that effort with, with, uh, with the county. Um, but, uh, no, we don't, we don't have any issue with that plan. It sounds like a reasonable plan to us.
If the council so desires in consideration of that, do we need to make any specific mention of onsite septic approval? Or is that, that's being in the ETJ, that is still their, their discretion? Am I correct on that?
Yeah, I believe, I believe you're correct on that. Maybe Rob.
I'm sorry, I was trying to say the same thing. Yes, I, I, I don't think there needs to be any linkage of that to this preliminary plat.
Okay, very good. So there's nothing special about that. Great.
I've got a question. I'm still not clear on whether, if there's a requirement to, you know, hook it up to the city system, the sewer system.
No, there's not.
There's not. And that's because it's in the zone that it's in now, it's not part of.
It's in the ETJ.
ETJ. But once it becomes an annexed into the city of Hasslet, will that be a requirement?
Uh, depends on the deal point, but as I understand, and they probably will, when they, um, build phase two, they won't have much of room for a septic system out there and they would be, they'd have to because of, you need the land area for a septic system. That'd be my assumption. But nonetheless, um, as a, as, uh, the applicant has described at phase two, then they would con, connect to the sanitary sewer system of Hasslet with a force main. But it is not a requirement right now. They're in the ETJ. Any comments, sir?
No, your point's valid, sir. The, uh, the spray field is required for phase one, uh, we've shown on some of our preliminary engineering, uh, so to double that number or triple the number of spray field, that would consume too much of the land area and not be feasible.
Very good.
So, but just to be clear, in phase two, you would pretty much have to tie onto the system.
Yes, sir. And, uh, let me make the point that it's, we're still weighing the economics of making that lift station force main part of phase. Uh, because certainly it would be septic costs that ultimately would be superseded by a lift station force main. So the church is analyzing the costs, the current costs, the ultimate costs and their growth projections to try to make a, their best economic decision on.
Any other discussion? Want to go to consideration in action then?
Mayor Holt.
Yes.
I just want to make a point. Um, after you've spoken, this is my turn.
And just for the, uh, public sake and speaking with Mr. Alabon, our city attorney, uh, wrote, I presented this topic to him and there is no requirement or issue about recusal on the vote. And, uh, you didn't even have to make the disclaimer, but, uh, thank you and, uh, all is good. Councilman Ricketts may vote on this item.
I would like to make a motion to approve preliminary plat for lot one, block one, milestone church addition.
Motion is made to approve, uh, preliminary plat for lot one, block one, milestone church addition. Is there a second?
Mayor Holt, yes, second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? A real call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Marl.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahira.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes five zero. Congratulations, Milestone Church.
Mayor, council members, thank you, and Mike Anderson, thank you for your help as well.
Item eight E, discuss, consider an act regarding community facilities agreement between city of Hasslet and Westport Parkway LLC for the Westport Parkway industrial park, industrial development, which location is 405 Westport Parkway. Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council, you've got before you, uh, standard, uh, CFA, more or less, that's been modified to fit, uh, the 405 Westport Parkway Edition project. This is the, uh, 400,000 square foot, um, facility located just, uh, just east of the creek, uh, as you come through on Westport Parkway, north side of the road. Um, this facility agreement, uh, covers the limited onsite public facilities generally consisting of a 10 inch water line and a fire line vault, a three inch domestic vault, um, limited drainage improvements required to, uh, deal with their, uh, increased runoff in the road right away. Excuse me. And then the applicant has some responsibility to, uh, construct and or strike turn lanes on 156. So we've got, um, towards the tail end of the agreement, kind of a breakdown as we normally do, showing the, uh, public facilities covered by the terms of this agreement. Um, and then we've calculated the total, uh, plan review and inspection fees associated with said improvements. You'll see it's a pretty large project, but the vast majority of the facilities are, are privately owned and are not subject to, um, plan review or inspection fees. So we've got this, uh, got this already to go. The final plat's been approved. We are, uh, anxiously awaiting their, uh, resubmital of some, uh, with their construction drawings for the Westport Parkway improvements. We wanted to make sure we had a, a good traffic control plan and we're, we're working with them to finalize their water line profile so they can have fire coverage at this facility. Uh, I suspect I had a meeting with them on Friday, uh, of last week and they're, they're getting pretty close to having their plans turned in. That's why you'll note, if you go to the page prior to what you're looking at, uh, exhibit B1, you'll see we've got a blank there. So assuming this gets approved this evening, um, we will fill in the blank there once we've had a chance to put our signature on the cover page for their, for their plans. Uh, one item of note, uh, was discussed earlier this, this afternoon in our staff meeting, but they, they do actually have a, a portion of the, uh, 15 inch, uh, TRA sewer line that serves a, a good chunk of the city. And so they're in the process right now currently of coordinating with, with TRA. Um, so we've got some easement things we're needing to sort out, uh, some agreements, some miscellaneous back and forth. So between the city and, and TRA, they are running the gamut of, of government approvals. So we're doing our best to keep them moving and, uh, once we get those plans ironed out and the easement situation, um, dealt with, then they should be, should be ready to go. So, um, if there's any other questions for myself or, or David, we'll, we'll attempt to answer those. Uh, Mr. Alabon, um, went through this, um, after we had made some changes and some modifications from, from the applicant's perspective as well as the city's perspective. So he's also available if you have any questions from a, from the legal standpoint of this agreement.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Councilmember Clark, Councilmember Rob?
Uh, Councilmember, uh, Mike, I'm, I have trouble visualizing what this project is. Is this the one that we recent, that recently asked for an expansion of the plans for one of the buildings to add on, uh, quite a few thousand square feet? Is that the one?
Yes, sir. This is a, this is a single, uh, single lot and it's a single building, Mr. Rob. It came to, came to us originally as a little over 300,000 square feet, if I remember correctly. And there was a subsequent request and site plan revision that was approved by P and Z and the council, I believe last month or December, I think it was December. And it, it, their, their plan at that time was they, they wanted to add 100,000 square feet to the building. So from engineering perspective, it didn't change any of the construction drawings, um, just added more square footage to the building. So, uh, that is the project that you're, you are remembering.
Okay, good. That's, I, I was thinking it was, but I wasn't sure. Appreciate your description.
Yes, sir.
Uh, any further discussion? If not, while I entertain a motion.
Mayor Holtzey. I'd like to make a motion to approve the community facilities agreement between the city of Hasslet and the Westport Parkway LLC for the Westport Parkway Industrial Development, which location is 405 Westport Parkway.
Motion is made to approve the community facilities agreement between city of Hasslet and Westport Parkway LLC for the Westport Parkway Industrial Park, Industrial Development located at 405 Westport Parkway. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, all right. Any further discussion? All right, a real call vote, please. Mayor Pro Tim Marl.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahira.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Motion is approved, five zero. Thank you, council. Motion is approved five zero. Eight F. Discuss, consider an act regarding approving a memorandum of agreement between the City of Hasslet and La Terra Development LLC regarding its deposit of funds in escrow with the city for the amount of four hundred eighty seven thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars for La Terra Phase Two pump station improvements. And I would say that this is associated with the Phase Two. Is that, that is correct? It's Phase Two. I got that nomenclature right?
That's correct.
Okay, it's Phase Two. And that plat, that final plat was approved by the city council contingent of approving this agreement. This agreement has been in the process for several months and is at the satisfaction in agreement between both parties. And we do recommend approval. Is there any questions with regard to the agreement?
Mayor Holesy.
Yes.
I move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the City of Hasslet and La Terra Development LLC regarding the deposit fund with the city in the amount of four hundred eighty seven thousand five hundred and eighteen for La Terra Phase Two station improvement.
Motion is made to approve the memorandum of agreement between the City of Hasslet and La Terra Development LLC regarding its deposit of funds in escrow with the city for the amount of four hundred eighty seven thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars for La Terra Phase Two pump station improvements. Is there a second?
Mayor Holesy, I second.
Uh, you, you seconded it? Okay, very good. Any further discussion? A real call vote, please. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Nahera.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Motion passes five zero. Item nine. Executive session. The city council reserves the right to adjourn into executive session during the course of the meeting to seek legal advice from its attorney regarding any item on the posted agenda as authorized by Section five five one point oh seven one of the Texas Government Code. Additionally, pursuant to the provisions of Chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code, city council may adjourn into executive session in accordance with the authority contained in, we have two items, nine A, Section five five one point oh seven one Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding regulatory requirements for development. And nine B, Section five five one point oh seven two Government Code, deliberations about real property and particular items, property acquisition for public facilities. So at this time, it is eight fifty six P M. I'm sorry, eight. I'm, eight, oh, I'm sorry, seven. Oh, man, we're doing good. Seven, seven fifty six. I'm sorry, I was working on assumptions. Seven fifty six P M. And we could adjourn and reconvene at five minutes after eight o'clock.
Particularly Councilmember Clark and Councilmember Rob.
Yes, I can.
We start this meeting up. What, what's happens is generally we'll get two responses, you know, here's council meeting, we need at least a quorum of three most of the time, sometimes you'll find out a quorum of four. So we're not holding our breath at four o'clock wondering whether we're going to have a meeting. I need you guys to respond as early as possible. I'll attend, I'll attend, as likewise say, I'd rather not attend. Don't be ashamed of that. I'd rather not attend, or I can't attend, but I'd rather not attend and I can, but if I have to, you know, to make a quorum, let us know as soon as you can. And I know we send out these emails, hey, please respond, but you get that agenda, you know, we're going to have a meeting, just let us know. It sure make life a lot easier for Secretary Shannon and myself. So, so we have the meeting coming up, what's the date for?
February 22nd at 6:30.
February 22nd.
Might have a conflict, so.
All right, do we need to push it out another two weeks?
Yeah, because we would have to know by Wednesday at noon, because we have to publicize the public hearing, so if we can't have a quorum of four on the 22nd, we would have to move it.
You have to publicize it this Wednesday or the following Wednesday, don't you?
It's 10 days before the meeting.
Oh, 10 days.
And they don't do it on Saturday, so we have to have it in by, in the Friday paper.
Two weeks from today.
Yeah, and well, Tuesday.
All right. Who, who here, Rob, Warren Rob, can you make that meeting, February 22nd?
Yes, I need to.
In person?
In person.
Well, yeah, I guess so. I got, I had cataract surgery since the last time we met and I don't see very well and much less at night, so I'm a little relaxed.
All right. I'll tell you what, we already got a conflict, we got too many conflicts going on right now. Let's just go ahead and shove it out two weeks.
That's the March 7th meeting.
That's fine. All right, put that on, but I need confirmation from you guys as soon as possible. Don't wait for somebody else to, you know what I'm saying?
We still need three here for a forum, correct?
Three is the minimum.
But if Councilmember Morrow is not going to be able to.
This one to say, because it's the zoning board of adjustments, you have to have four. Now, that's only for that 30 minute meeting. If someone wants to leave after that and go home, they certainly could, but let us know who it's going to be before we do that, okay? So let's get coordinated on this thing and proactive about it, that's all I'm asking. All right, good, all right. It is 8:39 PM, February the 2nd, 2022, reconvene in open session, are you recording? Okay, we're reconvening in open session at and the council is present in the chambers. We have Councilmember Clark and Councilmember Rob online and they are visible and audible. So let's go to item 10. Take, consider and take any action resulting from executive session, there are no items to consider. 11, future agenda items, council, do you have any, any agenda items?
Mayor Holsey, we had some projects back in budget session, the ILA project, is there any updates on any of those, those road projects partnering?
There is, and I'll put it on the agenda to give you updates.
Thank you.
Mayor Councilmember Rob.
Yes.
I'd like an agenda item to give us an update on where we stand and has the parkway easements and what, what our plans are to secure those remaining ones and what legal remedies are available to us.
Very good, I'll give you a quick one. All right away have been acquired except for two that are associated with NISD. And I am addressing the board.
Eric's Rob, we really can't do it tonight, it's not on the agenda, so I'm sorry to have to kind of shut you down on that, but.
I'll write you a note. Okay, all right, but I have that on there to, if need be, to put on the right away updates for the future agenda items. Very good, all right, any others? Councilmember Clark? Okay, all right then. Item 12.
Mayor Holsey, I move to adjourn.
Motion is made to adjourn, is there a second?
I second.
All right. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahara.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Thank you, council, good job. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.